Call to order, the January 21st, 2025, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. Jean, could you please take role?
Okay, Kelly.
Here.
Sean Kevlin.
Here.
John Simons.
Here.
John Goldberg.
I'm here.
Peter Boynton.
Hi.
Chris Cosaurus.
Here.
Okay, we have one discussion item and then a couple of other discussion items, just about the zoning bylaw amendments. So let's start with open space and recreation plan.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Amy Maxner. I'm the Conservation Administrator for the Town of North Andover. The Conservation Department has taken the lead in updating the seven-year open space and recreation plan in concert with other departments and stakeholders. And we, I think it was capital improvement funding that we applied for to secure the services of a consultant to help us with that effort. I want to introduce Krista Moravec with Horsley and Witten. And she's been our, the lead in helping us assemble our update and take us through the public process and drafting iterations of the plan. And as part of the approval process, the Planning Board is one of the entities that needs to give their blessing and their endorsement to the plan. And so we'd like to present what we have so far and field your questions. And I'll hand it over to Krista.
Thank you, Amy. So I have a short presentation that I'll walk through just to give some highlights of the plan and the goals and actions and where the Planning Board fits into that process. So first, I just want to talk about what we mean when we say open space and recreation, because it can mean different things in different contexts. So for open space in this plan, we're talking about public or private undeveloped land that has conservation or recreational interest or value. But recreation, I think, is a little more intuitive. Those are parks, our playgrounds, courts and things like that.
We have some questions as you go?
Sure. Sure.
So conservation and recreation, I get that. But I also saw there's a couple of sections that deal with safe drinking water.
Yeah, so I-
So how does that fit within those two purposes?
So I will definitely get to that.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to highlight some of the reasons why communities have an open space and recreation plan, these resources offer a lot of benefits, so you want to maintain them. So we do a plan to understand where we are, where we want to go and how we're going to get there. It's a good tool to measure success and are we meeting the challenges and the needs of the community? And having an approved and plan by the Division of Conservation Services keeps the town eligible for funding through that agency. But it also gives you more leverage and other kinds of funding. It shows for projects, particularly for implementation, it shows that you have thought about these projects and they have public support being in the plan. This is just a list of some of the accomplishments that the town has done since the last update. And so this plan is a tool that the town uses. So there has been implementation, so the town has acquired properties, the Glenwood Lot, 400 Great Pond Road.
By the way, it's on Dale Street, not on Great Pond Road.
No, no. Four Glenwood Lot and-
And, I'm sorry, yes, it's two separate.
And 400-
Yes, and I, yes, thank you. I will, I will make clarity for the next presentation. Thank you. The town adopted a local farmland importance designation, so that increases the amount of properties, farms that are eligible for different types of funding. You updated the lake, Coach-
Coach Chicoak.
Coach Chicoak, thank you. Watershed plan. Thank you, thank you. I know, I tried, I practiced on the way up.
Everybody does, everybody does.
But that, that was good. And by the way, we had one consultant who insisted that we were pronouncing it incorrectly.
Well, I've had this experience in other communities, like it's either Lake Quinzigammon or Lake Quinsimigan, depending on what, making sure I accent, put their accent on the right syllable, so I'm not, please correct me, absolutely. Resiliency planning, a lot of that work also supports protecting natural resources and open spaces. The town has secured funding, they're going to do a tree inventory and management plan, the athletic fields master plan that was done in 2023, and several improvements to athletic facilities that are listed here among others. Just to recap how we got here, so this is just our update process. We review data and reports and plans, inventories that the town has done since the last update. We do outreach to town staff and stakeholders, interviewing them to get additional information about what's in the plan. We had a public workshop in September and asked residents about what the town was doing well, where could it be better, what are some new ideas it should be thinking about. We also had another community, we did a community survey, excuse me, kind of paralleling that, trying to get input on people's experiences at the town's different resources. We took that information of all that input and started to draft a plan. We did another public engagement, more of a town hall type of exercise in this past June and kind of put out some draft goals, objectives and actions, seeing if we were on the right track. We're here now distributing the plan for comment and support. DCS, as Amy mentioned, they're looking for letters of support and comment from the Planning Board, also the Select Board, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. We're also going to meet with the Conservation Commission, so all of those entities will be, will be reaching out to. And then we submit to the, to DCS for review and approval.
What's the date you submit to DCS?
When, when we're ready.
Okay, there's not a hard deadline?
No.
Okay, and I saw the number here, I don't remember it, but ballpark, how many people total with the two workshops and the survey?
In the survey, we had about 700 almost. I apologize, I don't have my notes in front of me.
No, that's okay.
And then the workshop, the first workshop, we might have had about 30 or 40 people and the second workshop maybe about 20, 25.
So around 800-ish total.
And, and that's one tool. I know it seems like a small number compared to the population of the community.
It's better than a lot of the efforts we make.
It's tough, there's a lot of competition for people's interest.
Yeah, okay.
So hopefully through, you know, meeting with you all, we can continue to get feedback and your support. Next slide, please, Jean. So just going to touch on a few things, so hopefully this will answer some of your questions. There are seven required sections of the OSRP, so it's very prescriptive, but how we fill that information in is, you know, unique for each community. This is just some highlights of the plan. I won't go through all of them, but there's a community profile that talks about demographics of the town, an inventory of environmental resources, so that speaks to what you were asking. We talk about surface water, wetlands, groundwater, forested areas, farmlands. We touch on all of the natural resources in town. Then we inventory the open space and recreational resources, so those are public and private, and I do have a snapshot of that. We look at, there's an analysis of needs, so that looks at community needs, resource, natural resource protection needs, and then management from the town's perspective of those resources. We have list of goals and objectives and a seven-year action plan.
Just have a quick question.
Sure.
You mean, I guess, how do you, how do you delineate between what's open space and what's recreation, right? So-
There can be overlap.
Okay.
Usually, for the purposes of this, we look at who has ultimate jurisdiction over property, so youths and, I'm sorry, youth and-
Youth and Recreation.
Recreation Services or Recreation Department and Conservation Commission. There are also several open space properties that are under the jurisdiction of the Select Board or Water Department, so we kind of use that as, as a, how we inventory, inventory. And that, and the map that we have, DCS likes to see ownership, or the jurisdiction and ownership of those properties on the map, so it's clear. But that's a great question.
I mean, we really don't have anything that I can think of that is truly a hybrid of both. I mean, it's, the only thing that would come close to it is Gallagher Field, which is right at the foot of, you know, the land we own behind it. But for the most part, it's, either it's a place where they play sports or it's open space, yeah.
And it's really on how you define, I know sometimes people will say passive recreation and we think of walking trails and bird watching or kayaking. So I think it's really on how you as a community define sort of what recreation is, but-
Got it. Is there like explicit uses between open space and recreation? Like are those like defined?
Not necessarily. I think-
I would think, Sean, the recreation has some sort of, you take some sort of action on the land, right? So if it's just a field, then it's open space.
Yeah, yeah.
But if it's got markings for a baseball field or soccer or structure, then it becomes for recreation.
Got it.
So like, you know, Dale Street, we have some soccer fields there, they have lines usually and they have, you know, dirt for the baseball field, soccer nets and stuff like that, but then behind it, there are trails. That part would be open space.
That makes sense. Oh yeah, I mean, that's kind of how I was thinking about it, like, you know, like just certain uses, like obviously, like you're going to do forestry, it'd be in an open space, right? Not in a recreational space, I'm just trying to understand.
That, no, it's good to think about. And some of that is, you know, are there uses that conflict? And so those can be some of the needs or issues that come up.
Got it.
You know, how do you-
I would say the town common could be kind of a little bit, that might be the most of a hybrid, because there are parts of it that are clearly social and recreation with the stage and things like that, but there are parts of it that are just open.
And it does connect the trails, right?
Right, so that, that could, that might be kind of hybrid, but-
And, yeah, and so there are those sort of parks with just, maybe just walkways and benches, they might not have sort of actual recreational activities, but they're parks and so we, we do include them in here as well. So in the inventory of these, so we look at municipal land and here's sort of a high summary of kind of the big picture, so conservation land, parks and playgrounds, the courts and fields. We also put in some historic properties and school department land, because they may have playgrounds and athletic fields on them as well. State land, private land, they might have conservation restrictions or they're participating in the Chapter 61 program, private cemeteries, they might have public access, and then nonprofit land. And there may be, and we, not all of the inventory includes land that has public access, we might include, might have limited where, you know, only a certain portion of the property might be available, or you might, you know, in a sense of maybe not here, but like a private recreational area might charge a fee, so maybe our membership, like a golf course, for example. So we inventory all of them, because the, we're open space that has conservation or recreational interest.
Does the lake count as a recreational resource?
Yes.
Do we count the lake?
That might be something-
I mean, there's land around it.
No, but the actual, I mean-
The lake itself.
Is it platted? Does it have, the lake have a platen lot?
Oh.
You're talking about the lake itself?
I don't know if it has its own map and lot.
Because I think that's sort of how we inventoried it, but I mean, it is clearly a resource.
It's a recreational resource.
It is definitely a rec, and yeah, so people-
I mean, I would also say it's the river, Merrimack River too, again, is a recreational resource.
Even the land around it.
So I think those might want to be added to our chart maybe.
The point about the lake is recreational. We have lake usage regulations-
Yes, yeah.
That balance the resource for drinking water and protecting it and for people to use boats. So there are categories of boats that are allowed and are not allowed, and we issue hundreds of permits for residential boating every year, plus of course fishing, but I'd say the primary is recreational boating is allowed and supported with town resources like boat racks and issuing permits.
And we just funded a project that's going to redevelop the parking lot and areas around and the boat launch. And part of when that public hearing, one of the things that we discussed was trying to get more people using the lake as recreation. So I think that would be an important part to kind of add to one of the, I'd say, bigger draws for recreation in the town, so I think, and open space in the same sense of for conservation.
And that's a million-dollar project to reconstitute that access area for boating on the lake.
And I, and I believe in our goals and objectives, that is, you know, maintaining the lake, managing the lake for drinking water, but also recreational uses is definitely included. So when we get to that, we'll just make sure that it's in there and you can comment on that at that point too.
Are you in a mode here, as you brief this, to, if there is something that's warranted to add it, or are you coming to us with a product that's already baked?
It is not already baked.
Okay, thanks.
But I, but I will say, I mean, and having looked at-
It's close.
Beginning part of it, it, well, there's, it's very thorough too. I mean, a lot of this, these things are discussed in there. It's 350 pages.
Well, part of that is a lot of appendices.
Right. But even so-
Thank you for that, thank you for that.
So, but I do think that much of this stuff is, is unpacked in there. But whether it's entirely, I mean, if there's errors in there.
Absolutely.
No, no, and I totally agree with you. It's a hefty piece of work when you include all the pages, but it's, it's what?
Part of it-
Five or 600 pages, including the appendices?
Well, we did an eight, so part of this is doing an ADA self-evaluation of the properties that are under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission and Youth and Recreation Services. So there is an eight-page evaluation form for each one of those properties, so that unfortunately, it makes it a very long document.
That repeats over and over.
Right, for each site. So that's probably a good 200 pages right there. If you do print it, you don't need to print that, just the beginning piece of it. So this is a snapshot of that inventory map, so, and it's by ownership, so, you know, the tan color is state, yellow is Conservation Commission, so I don't have the colors on there, and I apologize, but just give you a sense of the distribution of resources. You know, different, I think the purple is private ownership. So there's quite a diverse landscape, you'll, you know, obviously north is to the left, so the north-left portion of town near Lawrence, I mean, you know, when we, one of the discussions is, you know, distribution of and access to resources. So there's, you know, are there more, better, more opportunities that can be put there and how do you link those? There's definitely the Stevens to Stevens connection that go into there, but sort of continuing to work on that and bringing access into that more, the denser part of town. So when we did the analysis of need, part of our, that part of collecting information, I just wanted to highlight how we came to that. So we had our public meetings on the left and our interviews on the right is also all the towns that the, or I'm sorry, all the plans that the town has written or implemented since then, so there's a lot of good information. They talk about resources and actions, so we want to be consistent with those and to continue to carry them forward. So there's a list of them here, all important information that we, we want to make sure we connect and support them and continue to move them forward. So I'm just going to highlight some of the needs that we saw, that we heard. So for the community needs, so open space needs, I think we learned there's a need to know more about the conservation areas in town. A lot of people didn't realize all the different opportunities and still beginning, I'm sorry, and building a trail network that connects them, continuing to build that, just making, you know, building that network. Under recreational needs, we heard that they're looking for more facilities and programs for adults 30 to 65, so are, you know, more, not seniors, but not very young people, but sort of that middle adult group. And there are definitely demands on athletic fields, so maintaining those fields, meeting those needs and managing and upkeeping them, because that can put stress on resources. Environmental justice, so this is a little bit what I was talking to about before, ensuring that everyone has access to resources, looking at the lower income portions of the community and the resources that they are able to get to either, you know, we look at, can I walk to a park? What is, you know, how close are resources? Do I need to, a car to get there? So thinking about how all residents are able to access recreational opportunities or, or open spaces and the types of resources that they can get to. And accessibility, so I mentioned we did our ADA self-evaluation, as it's called, for specific properties. And thinking about universal design, so this is sort of above and beyond ADA, so thinking about people with different types of abilities, if it's cognitive or just different ways to engage people and thinking that in the design process. Resource protection needs, so this might be a little bit of what you were referring to, so water quality is a big need, so continuing to address the, improving and maintaining the quality of water in the lakes, in the lakes in Stevens Pond, stormwater management and green infrastructure as a way to help improve the rain and the runoff that gets into wetlands and your surface waters, the importance of landscapes, habitat and wildlife corridors, so these are your agricultural lands, maintaining those, and then creating links for wildlife. And part of those is links for folks to, to connect through trails, but it also provides a wildlife corridor. And then trees and forestry and the importance of those resources and, you know, the inventory and the management of public trees, you know, that funding, that, that program that's moving forward, but also thinking about protecting existing trees and the overall canopy.
Can we still have a tree warden?
We do.
We do.
Who is the tree warden?
John Lavin at DBW. He just recently became certified, actually.
Yeah, I mean, because that was, I mean, you, you remember better than anybody else, but like when Phil Busby was the tree, I mean, there was real sort of passion and commitment there.
We also have, I don't know if he's a consultant, but we have another resource that they call in when needed as well.
Okay. I mean, because obviously at one level, the, the push and pull of street trees is utilities and, and the age of the trees, it's not an easy, I mean, we've, we've probably lost a few that we shouldn't have, but that's, you know, I mean-
And the sidewalk maintenance, especially in the downtown area. They ended up impacting sidewalks.
And I think-
We can save one.
Yeah?
And I think your manager, the inventory and management program can help sort of-
Identify-
Identify which trees and then sort of, I don't mean, you know, if you-
Well, prioritize, you know, immediate actions that we should take for either hazardous trees or trees that need some help to flourish, and then just identify best management practices for planting sites, species type, intersection with, with the infrastructure and the utilities and all that, so.
I mean, do we have a regular meeting between the town and the utilities companies about, you know, which trees they take?
I wouldn't say regular. I think it's as, on an as-needed basis.
I mean, because the problem ends up being is if they want to do something, it's hard to stop them from doing it.
But they do have to go to Sloughford for a public street tree permit.
Yeah.
And what are you speaking to though? We are actively doing an inventory throughout the entire town of our, of our public streets, trees.
Sorry, Bill Lomond's comments. So who's responsible for limbing trees for, with utilities? Is it the utility company or is that on, is that on us?
That's a good question.
Probably a combination of the two. So if a resident calls and it's a dangerous limbing and not related to utilities, the DPW has a crew that does that. But if it's the utility because of the wires, the utility has their own program that they go out and they limb trees that are affecting their wires.
They come through and they mark.
Okay.
And then they ask the resident, or it's not really an ask, say, hey, we think we need, we need to take this tree down and wanted to let you know. And then if you disagree, it, it is a process.
Okay.
But for the most part, I mean, it's a lot more limbing, I would say, than removing. And you see those trees, they have to cut off one whole side of the tree off and, and that becomes a health issue eventually.
That's true, and, and I think the vast majority of trees that they say they have to remove, they have very good reason for it. They, they had to take one from the front of our house and said, geez, it looks good to me, and, and they took a few minutes and said, well, here's why. And I said, oh, okay, go ahead.
And the final needs category is operation management needs, so this is from the town's perspective. So for conservation areas, really just having an overall land management strategy for municipal conservation land. There's a lot of individual management plans, so, you know, finding ways to be more efficient in managing those properties and roles and responsibilities and those types of issues to tackle. Recreational areas, so implementing the athletic field master plan, and then one of the challenges is, you know, there's a call for increased programming, but also, you know, you need staffing to match that, so trying to balance, balance that. Communication and engagement, as I mentioned, there was a lot of conservation land and places that people can visit, but there's just not a lot of information out there, so how, you know, right, knowing, letting the public know that these reses are available, I think the status of ongoing projects, better communication on that. And then promoting environmental stewardship of the spaces, the, the places in, in town, but also how can they transfer that into their own properties, you know, using native plants or best management practices for gardening and things like that.
Whether the trails group was involved in the conversation.
Yep, yep, so we interviewed friends in North Andover Trails, no fat.
Yeah, it's so bad.
So yes, we definitely interviewed them and, yeah, they're an amazing group and they go out and they care for all the towns.
Did you also talk to, to like Rick Green from the Recreation Committee and Terry Holland?
You interviewed Rick Gorman for sure.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
I'm trying to recall, isn't that awful? I just had a total brainstorm. We may have, I will double check, but I can't, I mean, we did sit with Rick and Rick gave us-
Yeah, I mean, basically, I, I think Rick Green is the guy probably that's the, the lead behind an awful lot of the expansion of the recreation facilities in town. He works closely with her. And, and Terry's been, I mean, everybody knows Terry's been involved forever in recreational projects, so he knows more about it than any, any other person in town.
Yep. Thank you. And then the last one is just continuing to build resilience to changes in climate and natural hazards. The town has its hazard mitigation plan, so just keeping that current and the municipal vulnerability preparedness program and just continuing to stay eligible for funding that comes through there and using that to maintain natural areas. There's a lot of intersect between that and the, and resiliency. So finally, is the seven-year action plan. And so we have a draft of that plan and the town is not at it alone, so there are a lot of departments that are involved and community partners. This is, you know, a snapshot of that, of those who we've included in that plan. And if, Jean, if you go to the next slide, please. So we have four primary goals, and what I'm going to do is I'm just going to go through each goal and just highlight some key actions that are in there. And, and there is some responsibility for you all, but I just wanted to touch on those and you can ask questions. I don't have everything, but if there's something you don't see, just let me know and we'll, we can just confirm it's there or what have you, so. So we'll go to the next slide. So our first goal is- So our first goal is to implement the OSRP in conjunction with other town plans, policies and regulations, you know, recognizing the intersect of all plans that are happening, so. One of the first actions in there is to evaluate the need for an open space committee, and this is in the town's 2018 plan, and that committee would lead implementation of this plan and monitor its progress and do the update every seven years. Another action, secure funding for the next update, and then collaborate with other town boards and commissions on the goals of, of the plan, making sure everyone's working towards the same objectives. Goal number two focuses on protecting the town's natural environment, its open spaces, and a list of reasons why, to maintain water quality, wildlife habitat, the importance of biodiversity, your cultural and agricultural landscapes, and building climate resilience. And we have, this first one is highlighted, so implementing the Lake Sea watershed management plan, and so your role in that is very important. We also talk about continuing to acquire, protect land around the lake and within the watershed, and that is done through various ways, through acquisition, through conservation restrictions or easements, promoting environmental stewardship, completing the inventory, the tree inventory and manage plan, using what's called nature-based solutions, so that's using natural areas to manage and filter stormwater as opposed to pipes and, and.
Structures.
Structures, yeah, so that's the focus of that. Goal number three is about ensuring that all residents have opportunities to be active and enjoy nature, so that requires implementation of the athletic field master plan, looking at accessibility, creating more accessible trails. I think that was a big need that we saw in finding opportunities to do that. The Council on Aging is looking to do an age-friendly initiative, so supporting that through the open space and rec plan, making sure that open space and recreational areas are in your underserved neighborhoods or your lower income neighborhoods, making sure that they have access, and then continuing to expand the walking and trail network townwide. So all those fall under that. And then the last goal is to build capacity at the town level to ensure that you're planning, to support the planning, protection, management and sustainable use of your resources. So establishing a plan and budget for field maintenance, developing a management plan or strategy for the stewardship of the town's conservation lands, evaluating the reuse of 400 Great Pond Road, so like you said, to balance water quality for drinking, but also ensure public access and recreation, and develop criteria and a process to prioritize land for protection. So sort of being mindful and strategic in land, in land protection. And that's, and that's it. Might have been a little bit more than 10 minutes. So these are our next meetings, we're meeting with the Conservation Commission next month and the Select Board in March. Any other questions or comments?
Just one comment, I just, I just briefly read through the, you know, some of the whole, the work, the working draft. I didn't realize that there's about a thousand acres under chapter 61 in town. I just didn't realize, appreciate the magnitude, it's actually under chapter 61, so that was, that was a pretty compelling number.
It's a great program.
Yeah.
For farmers and other forestry management and things like that. And those are properties that the town keeps an eye on, keep relationships with the landowners to sort of maintain that status.
So what are the next steps for this board? What do you ask of them?
So our ask is to, as Amy said, to endorse this plan, so a letter that, that says as much toward, to the Division of Conservation Services, and I can provide a template of what that plan is, but it's really up to you to, you know, if there's things you would like to highlight or recognize, but really just looking for an endorsement of the plan.
So I have a couple of questions and comments.
Great.
And some I think I'll direct to you, Krista, and Amy, I may offer a few thoughts for you as well. And let me start with, as I understood from the beginning, Amy, you're the owner of this plan here in the town?
Oh, I don't like that word.
Okay, well, you, you took on the project to do the update.
Well, yeah, I mean, the Conservation Department will be sort of the point.
Okay.
Place of making sure things.
Better description, so I'll maybe offer a few thoughts for you as well. So the first one is, I think, very trivial, but I just couldn't help myself, on page 36, there's a wonderful photo provided by Friends of North Andover Trails, but it's mislabeled.
Okay.
It's not Foster Farm, it's Half Mile Hill with a partial view of the lake in the distance. And I know that's very trivial, but I just thought, you know, people like me will look at that and say, that's not right. And going through the report, I want to echo Kate's comment, it's incredibly thorough and I think a fantastic resource. It's wonderful to see that we're devoting the time and the resources to really not just identify, but think through all these sort of categories and steps. And one of my questions for you, Amy, is, I mean, I know we, we have an action in here on how we use the plan, but do you have any thoughts on how the town will use this plan going forward?
Right. So staff capacity has been an issue forever.
Yeah.
In probably every town. We're blessed in the Conservation Department with a helper that I have, the field inspector position, and we have recently tweaked that role so that it's not just field inspector for conservation, but it's also a planning position. So we knew the need with this upcoming update and, you know, we don't want the plan to be a sit on the shelf and collect dust.
Right.
So we were able to tweak that job description, so our new field inspector slash planner will be the point person to help mobilize these goals and objectives. And obviously, you know, it's, it's going to be a community effort, but at least we have someone who's focused and dedicated to that, so.
Good, I'm glad to hear that, thanks. I think that inspector has been at our property many times.
Yeah.
And thank you for all the help with that.
Sure.
So now the things that I don't think are trivial, that I definitely wanted to suggest, and I think maybe this goes to both of you, so there's a number of things that this plan lays out that, here's the great things that we have done, EG completed since the last plan, but it also talks about, here are the ongoing and future initiatives, and I think there's two that I would suggest, Amy, should be included in this report. They both have to do with protecting the resource of our sole drinking water supply. And one of them is very much a partner to the watershed plan update, which Jean and others in town did incredible work that had not been updated since 1986, and it was fantastic. What that update did not do was a technical study of the condition of the water using about 20 measures from the 86 plan as a benchmark, and how do those 20-odd measures look today? And it's everything from phosphorus, sodium, oxygen content, it's really a good technical, scientific assessment of the water body in 86, and how's it look today? Now, the reason I'm suggesting this should be included in the plan, for example, one of the ongoing and future is we're gonna do a tree inventory, that's good to have in here, and you also included, we're gonna figure out the uses for the 400 Great Pond Road property. So I'm really not being critical of this, you've done a great job of capturing all the, the completed, ongoing and future, but I think these two should be part of the, the future. Now, the town manager did acknowledge and say that as of, I think, October of '24, that they're looking for sources of funding for the technical study of the water supply, and there was a one-page summary of what type of technical study and why, and that was sent to the town manager in the fall of '23. So there is documentation, I would strongly suggest that this at least be mentioned, and if appropriate, Amy, perhaps include that one-page outline of what would be needed and why. The second item is the grandfathered use of gas engines for safety purposes by Brooks School for their rowing team. Now, the town commissioned a task force back in the 90s that included Brooks School, and many of you have heard me say this before, in that written report, Brooks committed that when technology allowed, they would work on transitioning the gas engines to electric engines. We have had a couple of town meetings with Brooks within the last year or two, and they're clearly were not ready to make the transition, and I think that's fair, because there's a real safety component here. But there was discussion of, their discussion, that they are assessing this challenge many times per year. What's the latest state? Who else has transitioned? How could they do it? What are the challenges? So I do think, given that we do not allow gas engines on the lake, except for this grandfathered use, and given that Brooks previously committed to look at this, I think it needs to also be documented here, and I'd be happy to help if, for example, you need a copy of that town-sponsored task force, but there's been really a lot of discussion of this with the Select Board as well. And there's a couple places in the report where I would suggest this might fit, both of these. One is on page six for plans and initiatives, the other is the water quality sections on pages 43 and 59, and then at the end of the report, where you go through very thoroughly and, but also concisely, the recommended actions, and you summarize them here. Action number two deals with water quality, and much like the 400 Great Pond pending action, both the technical study of the water column and the grandfathered use of gas engines by Brooks could go in all of those places. And again, just to reiterate, what a fantastic job. I did go through the report, I had no idea it was that long when I started, I thought I'd just take a quick 15 or 20 minutes to scan through, but, but.
Thank you.
It was so good. I, I'm serious, I'm not blowing smoke here, it was so good. I mean, I figured, you know, I'll just do as my, it kept my attention all the way through, but those things at the end that repeated, I'll admit, I scanned through them pretty quick. Okay, so thank you, and I appreciate your patience for this input.
No, thank you.
Is that more than 10 minutes?
So.
Good job.
Why don't you work with them to see if we can make those additions, and then we can, once those things are kind of looked at and addressed, we can have a vote to kind of seal our approval of the plan.
Great, thank you. Amy, I'm happy to trade a couple of emails on this, if that helps.
Were there any other questions?
No, but when, I honestly have not had the time to read it as in-depth as maybe Kate and Peter have, so if anybody else has any other comments in the next two weeks, we'll get them to you, and then we can look to maybe vote on this before your Conservation Commission meeting, so if not for the 7th, like the 12th, 13th.
Maybe you want to wait till a final draft after they provide their comments in the Select.
That's true, that's a good point, yeah, maybe after the Select, because maybe you'll get additional comments, then you can work it all into a final draft and we can vote on it.
So we'll present the same document to all three groups.
Great.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, because yeah, they might have feedback too.
And it might be worth just following, like, at each, now each one, we can state the comments that we received from this board to let each of them know, the Select Board and the Conservation Commission, that we've also heard these comments from the planning board, so if that's.
So if anyone else has additional comments, why don't we forward them to Jean, and Jean, you can forward them to whoever needs to look at them.
Jean, should I go through you with Amy or just?
No, I think you can go directly to Amy.
Okay, maybe I'll copy you.
That's fine.
Okay, great.
Great.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you for your time.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Additional potential discussion items, all right, potential May 13, 2025 annual, what's coming up, four months away, annual town meeting zoning bylaw amendments. We don't have to go through all of them, Jean, why don't we just talk about anything that there are changes to?
Yep, so there's no changes to the historic bond overlay or the family suite amendments that you've seen previously.
Okay.
The three red line ones pertain to the floodplain district, where we now have a date added, date specific for the map update.
Wonderful.
And the question we got in this technical data must be submitted to FEMA within six months. I returned suggested language to kind of tie this up a little bit, and we're just waiting to hear back from the state as to whether they're in agreement with that language. So I anticipate by the next meeting, we will have red line edits that address the concern raised at the last meeting.
Okay.
All right, for the limited site plan review, other than an extra space there, the one amendment is, you may recall, the last meeting, I used the term historic district authority, and so I've just amended this paragraph to specifically say a special permit or other approval required, including not limited to the water special permit, and then number two is pulling in the definition of the historic district from the ADU by law, and so it just carries that definition in with the same verbiage. I think it's just cleaner that way. And that was the only red line edit to this one.
Okay.
And then with the help of Kate, there is what appears to be a significant amount of edits, but I would classify them as housekeeping and streamlining verbiage, not material changes, however, good quality edits that I think make for a lighter lift in terms of the read, and it did pull in a couple more definitions, because I used definition terms in definitions, but then didn't carry the definitions referenced, so you'll see a few new definitions, but that are in the regulations that I've now carried in. But all these red lines are really just streamlining the language.
That's great. Thank you, Kate, for helping with the edits, that is very helpful in this very technical document. Thank you for that, and Jean, too. Has anybody heard anything from anybody about this?
Yes.
Because that's, so I'm curious to hear about that as part of our discussion, because I think if there are positives, negatives, questions, concerns, it would be so much better to hear them now than to hear them two weeks before town meeting. I mean, again, we're, similar to the MBTA one, we're limited in what we can do, and also in this, we're basically taking the, as many kind of opportunities to curtail or to limit as we kind of can under state law, so I mean, I think the critiques would most likely be minimal, but I'd be very curious to hear if anybody's heard anything critical or otherwise, or questions or otherwise, that we can hopefully address now.
So what I've heard from more than one person was a common theme, that there is some form of structure or property or layout or whatever, and the questions were not sure if this exactly fits the criteria, they admitted they, they don't know all the criteria, but they're very keen on how this might work, if not as a by right by some type of perhaps special permit or waiver or whatever.
So people wanting to do accessory dwellings and wondering, or to do something and wondering if it qualifies?
The former.
Okay.
And, and some of them sort of range with, you know, it seems like there are accessory dwellings in place.
Well, no, that's my whole point.
Yes, and others that say it's not an accessory dwelling, but boy, it, it could be. be, and, you know, there's a family member that, you know, is too young or too old to afford to come back, and, wow, this would really be great, and I'm not sure if it fits, and, and so I said, hey, if not by right, come and explain what you got, and, you know, I, I think there's an openness to see what might be able to be done.
Okay, good. That's good feedback, John, anything?
And, and so I think the lesson from that is, we've already talked about this.
Right.
That if something doesn't fit, you know, square peg in a square box, that there could be some flexibility to help people make things work.
I mean, it seems to me the big thing is, as everybody knows, what's going to overwhelm the town meeting this year is the old school stuff. The question is, will it put people in a sour mood, uh, or will it just focus on that and nothing else? Because what we don't want to have happen, I think was the purpose of your question, is something like that happened last year, you know, where people just resisted the, um, MBTA zoning just as a matter of principle. It, it sounds like you've heard the opposite, which is what occurs.
I have heard the opposite, but it also made me wonder if, you know, we had a public forum at the senior center, and there wasn't much we could say, but, hey, this train is coming, and then we said, shouldn't we do it again? We can't do anything until we learn more, certainly not before January. I, I actually, having gotten this feedback, I, I actually think it might not be a bad idea, to your point, and, um, I think part of it might be, if we could do it far enough in advance of town meeting to get people talking and asking questions, and perhaps coming to a planning board meeting, but I, I think we should think about doing another one, and just running through. This is, you know, this is out of our control, this is in our control, and here's where we think it's headed.
I think we could, once the, the next state guidelines come down, which is supposed to be the end of this month.
Soon.
Yeah.
It's like that movie, The Money Pit?
Yeah.
Like The Horizon, right?
I, no, I, I, so I think we could, um, and especially once we've started our public hearings and really have our draft in what's almost now final form, I think that would be a good opportunity to do it of, okay, we're already doing our public hearings, this is our bylaw, but how did we get here?
Right.
What did we consider? What could we still possibly consider?
And I don't think we should entertain doing these kind of special sessions for everything we do, but this is so impactful of the entire town, that I think it might fit the category of doing an extra senior center thing, maybe.
Maybe, I, I think we should talk about, the other thing is, could we just do a, because we're already having public hearings.
I know, yeah.
So could we do a PSA, like, or like a little video thing?
Yeah.
And say, this is what we're doing, this is where we're at, come to the public hearing? Because since we're already having them.
I, I like that better, because it will be more than one, right?
Right, yes.
Give people choices.
Right, correct.
I like that better.
Okay, and we could probably do that, like, we start the public hearing on the seventh. We may be able to do it in advance of that, is it the seventh or the fourth?
The fourth.
The fourth.
Two weeks.
I'd say after the fourth, because I want to see if these guidelines come out, because if they do something about like utilities, or if there's, there might be some things that we actually change on the fourth, but, um, I'd say after the fourth, let's open our public hearing, and then we can, we can talk about what we, maybe as a group, we could talk about what we would want to do in a PSA. So what we did before was Peter and I did a little YouTube video, it was like three or four minutes, I think.
With NA Cam.
With NA Cam, and it was just, okay, this is what the public, this is going to be a public forum, this is what we're going to talk about, uh, hope to see you there, kind of thing, just kind of giving a little bit of information, uh, just, just information, not kind of, kind of advocating for anything, and that could be what we do here, just saying, hey, this is, this is the process been so far, this is what the bylaw's at, we'd love to hear your commentary, et cetera. Uh, but I think it would be helpful to, for people to kind of give us ideas of what we might, what we may want to pull out of the bylaw and out of the process to kind of explain on a little three or four-minute video.
I like that idea.
Okay, all right.
And in the circles I travel in, I...
Yes.
My observation is, is people just don't even know about this.
Okay.
They don't know the state came down with this new law, and, you know, by right, um, law, and so, um, I just think, at least, just the information about, here's what this is, and here's what it isn't, and here, you know, would be helpful, not that they're necessarily going to even, everybody's going to want to, you know, care about the details of our bylaw changes, but just to understand what's going on.
Yep, sometime, and once we do get closer to town meeting, what happens is, like, um, the town puts out for every warrant article, like a summary and stuff like that, that's more in like April, right? That's like once the warrant's already established, so, um...
And, and is it user-friendly, or is...
Yeah, it is, but it, but again, it's also very late in the process, it's more to inform people who are actually voting, rather than to inform us about what they're voting on. So I do wonder if we could put together a, even just like a flyer or something like that, and just send it out on the town email, just, again, we're limited to what people...
Sometimes under the radar screen's better.
So I, I do think anecdotally, that, that I've heard that at town meeting, that people can only really shoot down one thing.
Yeah.
So, like, if the budget comes first and everyone, the energy is taken up there, then everything else just kind of, kind of goes, so it'll be nice to not be the center of attention, um, but let's think about that, I mean, I think, I think for the most part, people from, again, from the master plan, I think most people approve of this area.
What's, what's going to happen is, there, there's always a certain deference shown to town boards like the planning board, because, no, for the reason is, nobody understands this, they figure, you guys are working on it, we trust you, or maybe we trust you, and we'll believe what you say, but every so often, that doesn't happen.
Yeah.
And, you know, and there are a couple cases, but the momentum for that, that opposition starts early, and it doesn't feel like it's, you know, starting up, but having some sort of public awareness of what it is versus what it isn't can preclude that, and I think more along the lines of coming to our meetings is the best approach.
Okay, yeah, and just again, just people try to listen and try to talk to the people that you know, just that if they're, you know, to encourage people to come and tell us their thoughts and concerns, that would be helpful. Okay, awesome, um, okay, um, so everything will, everything has been published for the first time in the newspaper last week?
Friday, the first ad we end, this Friday, the second ad will run. I'm going to clean up these redline edits, um, so the ad says, anybody that wants to come in and look at the materials, everything's at the planning department and the clerk's office. Um, I mentioned at the last meeting that we've reached out to, um, Margaret Hurley from the municipal, municipal law unit, so I'm going to ask town council to send her this revised version, because again, I think it's a much easier read. Um, she's aware that the hearing opens February fourth, so I think she's going to try to give feedback if she sees any red flags prior to that.
Okay.
I have one que- one quick question. So with this bylaw for the ADUs, obviously, the state brings it to us, we bring it to the town, they adopt the bylaw, we're going to vote on it, is this an MBTA-type situation where if for some reason it doesn't pass, that state, is there repercussion to it tied with this, or is this a completely different?
So there no, there's no, the only repercussion is that we default to the state law, so if we don't have our own bylaw...
Then it goes, they're vague.
Correct, there's no, there's no limitations.
It's all under the building inspector.
Probably the key to the selling, the argument, the primary argument is crazy not to do it, because you can get what you want if you do it this way.
Correct.
The, the oversight would be strictly at the building inspector level, so they'd come in, apply for a building permit, if it complies with state law, he has to grant it.
There would be no...
So this is us tailoring it down?
Correct, there would be no... There would need no special permits for detached, there would be no limitation, there would be no cycland review, there would be no, I'm sorry, cycland review, there, there would be no, um, uh, limits on how many per lot or any of that, it would be whatever state law allows is by right.
Gotcha, thank you.
Actually, except for what is by special permit, and then we don't even have a special permit process for it set up. It would be a very bad idea to shoot it down in its entirety.
Yeah, I just don't see it.
If anything, you would make...
A contentious item on the agenda, that's what I'd be at that.
I agree that it should not be.
Yeah.
Which doesn't always mean that it isn't.
Right, right.
But I think if people are unaware...
Correct, I think that's a key point.
...at its point, that even, that it's coming from the state, if there's complete unawareness, then that could gin up, like MBTA, a last minute, you know, two weeks beforehand, this spike of energy trying to save the town.
Right, it is, but I mean, I think a little bit to, to Chris's question, that it is different, and it's like, no, if that's what you're concerned about, you should support this.
Yeah, it's the, it's the opposite.
It's the opposite, yeah.
Right. Correct, theoretically, you could be opposed if you want more...
Wild West or...
If you want, if you wanted, more by right.
Free throw.
Uh, I think, I think honestly, our bylaw is a very good kind of compromise position, that it, it narrows where it's appropriate to narrow and keeps it...
Yep.
Um, wide where...
Yeah.
Kind of the, the base model ADU is under the state law. I think it's a compromise.
I think, you know, to that point is, is that I think we'll probably get more pushback of why are we not being more conservative, right?
More liberal, we're being, we're actually being more conservative.
Oh, right, yeah.
I think, but I think, I think it's a good balance, so, um, okay.
Yeah.
Good, all good points, uh, but yeah, I think we should try to put them together.
Okay, can we get a motion to approve the meeting minutes from January seventh?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Hi. Okay, anything before we adjourn? All right, good meeting, um, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
All in favor? Hi. Wonderful.